Good afternoon, everyone. Our school board members are back from their meeting and we are very thankful for that. And so again, I want to welcome you to the swearing in ceremony for three of our new school board members. We have retired Colonel Kenneth Paulson of Ward Four, Mrs. Sarah DeCalagiro, I'm sorry, Ward Five, let me get that straight, Ward Five, thank you for that correction. Sarah DeCalagiro from Super Ward Number Six, and this Alfreda Thomas from Super Ward Number Seven. So again, welcome, we appreciate you being here and your support of Norfolk Public Schools. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to our illustrious school board court, Karen Tanner.
Good afternoon, family members and friends. It's awesome to see so many people here today to honor the ladies and the gentlemen on today. We're going to have Mr. George Schaefer, he's a clerk of the Norfolk Circuit Court, he's going to present the certificates of election and oath of office administered by him as well. But I'd like to ask the current board members and superintendent if you would go down to the dais and then I'll call each, I mean to the backdrop. Thank you, thank you very much, to the backdrop. And then we're going to call each person individually. Mr. Schaefer, you can go to the podium. And the first person today that Mr. Schaefer is going to swear in is Colonel Kenneth Paulson.
Yes, sir. All right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially
that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all the duties incumbent upon me
all duties incumbent upon me
as a school board member of the school board of the City of Norfolk
as a school board member of the school board district of Norfolk
for a term beginning
for a term beginning
November twenty eighth
November
twenty twenty four
November twenty eighth, twenty twenty four
and expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty six
and expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty six
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
All right. I need you to sign. I need you to sign here and here. Okay? Okay. Sure, I have. I got a backup?
Yeah.
And Ken, please, you should have it.
Okay.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Paulson.
Do I say here or go back?
Next, we have Sarah DeCalagiro.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Before, all right, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear or affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially
and that I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all the duties incumbent upon me
all the duties incumbent upon me
as a school board member of the school board of the City of Norfolk
as a school board member of the
School Board
of the City of Norfolk.
For a term beginning
for a term beginning
January one, twenty twenty five
for a term beginning January one, twenty twenty five
and expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty nine
and expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty nine
according to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
All right, I need you to sign. Thank you. Congratulations.
And next, we have Alfreda Thomas.
I do solemnly swear or affirm
I do solemnly swear and affirm
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia
and that I will faithfully and impartially
I will faithfully and impartially
discharge and perform
discharge and perform
all the duties incumbent upon me
all the duties incumbent upon me
as a school board member of the school board of the City of Norfolk
as a school board member
of the school board
of the school board, City of Norfolk
that's a long one.
It's a long one.
For a term beginning
with a term beginning
January one, twenty twenty five
January one, twenty twenty five
and expiring December thirty one, twenty twenty nine
expires January the one, twenty twenty nine
okay, December thirty one, twenty twenty nine
December thirty one, one day.
One day. According to the best of my ability
according to the best of my ability
so help me God
so help me God.
All right.
And while they are signing, we want to allow our new board members, if you'd like to give a few remarks, I'm tongue-tied today, must be hot in here, tongue-tied, if you'd like to give a few remarks today, you can definitely do that. And we can start with you, your grandbabies already given remarks, but you can start, Ms. Thomas, and then we'll go with Ms. DeCalagiro and Mr. Paulson.
Okay, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the residents of Super Ward Seven. If you're not here, you're looking at it, thank you and I love you. And this is for the babies.
Thank you all who came out to support me today, but thank you most to the voters who have put their faith in me to represent them and their children. And again, I'm very honored to be here today. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming today. You're from all parts of the city and that's what we do, we represent all of the city and not just one ward. And it's an honor to be elected, something I'd never envisioned and thought about, but when the opportunity came, I decided to do this. And I'm going to do the best that I can do as a Super Ward Two, and I hope that you all support us as we move forward. Thank you.
And this concludes our swearing in ceremony, but we'd like to recognize our distinguished guests that are here today, Ramin Fadahy, who is here, the Commonwealth's Attorney, if you can just raise your hand. Councilman JP Page is here. Councilwoman Andrea McClellan is here. There she is. And if there's anyone else that I have missed, please raise your hand, but we have our esteemed NPS staff that's here on the ready to be a support to you as well. Just real quick, we have a nice little reception out in the hallway with sandwiches and fruit and just have a moment, just real quick, to congratulate our new school board members, and again, congratulations, and let's go and celebrate just for a few minutes. Thank you.
Good afternoon, members of the school board, NPS administration and staff, and members of our community. As you are aware, I will briefly be in a unique position while the school board enters into its organizational meeting, at which time, the school board will formally elect a chair and a vice chair for the City of Norfolk School Board. As such, I will be chairing the meeting as the board prepares to make that determination. So at this time, I call this meeting to order for the purpose of organizing the leadership roles of the school board for a period of January eighth, twenty twenty five, until December thirty first, twenty twenty five. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll.
Basine
here
Buffalo
here
DeCalagiro
here
Martin
President
Paulson
here
and Thomas
here
Nominations are now in order for the office of Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board.
I nominate Dr. Martin.
Dr. Adele Martin is nominated, are there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Tiffany Moore Buffalo is nominated, are there other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order. Okay, do I hear a second?
What, second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the floor is closed for nominations. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll, and each member, please state the name of the candidate whom you support for the role of Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board.
Ms. Tanner.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
Dr. Martin.
Paulson.
Dr. Martin.
Thomas.
Dr. Martin.
Moore Buffalo.
Candidate number one, Dr. Adele Martin, has three votes. Candidate number two, Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo, has three votes. Because there is a tie in the number of votes between the candidates who were nominated for the position of Chair, the vote dies. So at this time, I'm going to open up the floor for a discussion. Perhaps it would be appropriate for the members of the board who have been nominated to serve as Chair to share with the community and staff why they perceive that at this time, they would be the best candidate for this position. And so, Dr. Martin, if you'd like to start.
Sure. Prepared remarks. So, good afternoon, colleagues, Dr. Birdsong, NPS leadership team, and family and friends. I want to begin by expressing my heartfelt gratitude to all who have encouraged me to run for Chair of the Norfolk Public School Board once again. Your support, coming from community members, current and former board members, NPS employees, and city council leaders, has reinforced just how deeply the success of Norfolk Public Schools resonates with our community. Our schools are the backbone of our city, and the people of Norfolk, residents, business leaders, and NPS staff alike, deserve leadership that embodies responsiveness, transparency, and respect. We need a leader who values courageous, civil conversations, and who acts with resolve to meet challenges head-on. During my three terms as Chair from 2020 to 2023, I led during one of the most demanding periods in the history of education. It was a time that required resilience, collaboration, and decisive action, all of which I demonstrated while staying focused on what mattered most, the well-being of our students, families, and educators. Unlike some, I'm sorry, to be clear, I am not running to advance a personal agenda, I am running because I believe in this district, its mission, and the incredible potential of its people. As Chair, I will continue to listen, collaborate, and advocate for the policies and resources that best serve our students and educators. Unlike some, I believe leadership is not about personal convenience or retreating when faced with adversity. It's about staying the course even when the path is difficult. As a parent of children in Norfolk Public Schools and a proud resident of this city, I am deeply invested in its success, not just professionally, but personally. I am ready to work with each of you to ensure Norfolk Public Schools thrives for each student, each family, and each educator. A vote for me is the first step to correcting the course toward a renewed focus on what matters most, that educators are equipped with the resources and training they need to set each student up for success. Together, we can build a stronger, more united district that delivers on its promises. Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Ms. Moore Buffalo.
Well, good afternoon, Norfolk residents, visitors, colleagues. I am running for Chair again because, again, as Dr. Martin said, I wanted to stay the course and build on what this board has built the last year. I feel that we did work collaboratively and transparency when I led this board last year, and I want to continue to with the continuity of building and moving forward. I also want to share that my tenure as leader of the school board, that we have accomplished a lot. We have goals, we have non-negotiables, we're focused, we have a monitoring calendar where we are student outcome focused, and that was all done under my leadership. And I want to share with each colleague that I am willing to work and collaborate with each and every one of you. I bring the fact that I want this school division, I am a product of Norfolk Public Schools, and I want this division to move forward, and under my leadership, having the innovation and vision to do that. So that is why I want to continue to lead this board so we can steer the course and move this district forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore Buffalo. So at this time, is there any further discussion? Ms. Basine.
Yes, I'd like to add some comments as well. I nominated Mrs. Moore Buffalo for the position of Chair because I believe that she has served in that role admirably over the last year. Like she said, she has brought about a focus on student outcomes, which is something that has been greatly missing over the last several years. And as a longstanding board member for the last decade, we have come very far from that in the last six years, and that is something that I've been encouraged to see us moving back to with, under Mrs. Moore Buffalo's leadership. We've had significant, I think, significant issues around transparency that have hindered progress, that we, I am hopeful with this new board that we're going to be able to move forward and through, and I believe that Mrs. Moore Buffalo's leadership is exactly what we need to do that. She brings a collaborative leadership style, she's responsive, something that in the last year has been remarkably different from what we've observed in the years prior, and that's why I'm supporting Mrs. Moore Buffalo in that role.
Thank you, Ms. Basine. Further discussion, is there further discussion?
I'd like to make comment, please, or comments, excuse me. You're very, what specifically has, can I address the candidates directly, or is that?
So at this time, Mr. Paulson, if you will just give us general comments
Got it, okay.
Specifically directed towards your support of Dr. Martin for the position of Chair.
Okay, thank you. I believe that Dr. Martin has the skills, and she's demonstrated those in the past, and she wants to come back and do that again. We all have issues with the school, things that are not the school, but are ourselves, and I think she's addressed them a little better, and that's why I'm supporting her. I think she's going to make some of the differences that we need going forward as a school board and as an entity, that we are not achieving some of the things that we need to do, like right sizing the schools. And we need to address those, and that has not been addressed since, I'm not sure when this all started, but I think she's got the idea down and we can move forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paulson. Is there further discussion? Based upon that, nominations are again in order. So take some time to reflect upon what you just heard, and I'm going to call for nominations again, and then we will take a vote again. So nominations are again in order for the office of Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board.
I nominate Dr. Martin.
Dr. Adele Martin is nominated, are there other nominations?
I nominate Tiffany Moore Buffalo.
Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo has been nominated, are there other nominations? Hearing none, the motion to close nominations is in order, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll, and again, each member, please state the name of the candidate whom you support for the role of Chair for the City of Norfolk School Board. Ms. Tanner.
Basine.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
Buffalo.
Moore Buffalo.
DeCalagiro.
Moore Buffalo.
Martin.
Dr. Martin.
Paulson.
Dr. Martin.
And Thomas.
Dr. Martin.
Candidate number one, Dr. Adele Martin, has three votes. Candidate number two, Tiffany Moore Buffalo, has three votes. Because there is still a tie in the number of votes between the candidates who were nominated for the position of Chair, the vote dies. So therefore, at this time, I'm going to request a motion to enter into a fifteen-minute recess. May I have a motion to enter into a fifteen-minute recess?
Motion that we enter into a fifteen-minute recess.
Okay, all right, is there, okay, thank you. The motion has been properly seconded to take a fifteen-minute recess. Let's enter into recess and report back to this room at four o'clock. All right, please.
Shouldn't the motion actually be voted on?
We can, we can vote it. So Ms. Tanner, please call the roll to enter into a recess.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
DeCalagiro.
Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
I did get Buffalo Thomas right.
Aye.
Okay, so at this time, we will take a fifteen-minute recess. There are several rooms that are available, if board members want access to those rooms. Of course, we have my conference room, we also have the school board conference room, and we have a conference room on the eleventh floor and the chief academic officer's conference room. As you know, we can't have more than two board members meeting at a time because that would constitute a meeting. So we will meet here again at four o'clock. Thank you. I call this meeting back to order. I call this meeting back to order for the purpose of organizing the leadership roles, or roles for the school board of the City of Norfolk for a period, again, from January eighth, twenty twenty five, until December thirty first, twenty twenty five. So nominations are now again in order for the office of Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board.
I nominate Dr. Martin.
Dr. Adele Martin is nominated, are there other nominations?
I nominate Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
Ms. Tiffany Moore Buffalo is nominated, are there other nominations?
Nominate Sarah.
Ms. Sarah DeCalagiro has been nominated. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, the motion to close nominations, oh, number three, I'm sorry.
I'll withdraw my name.
Okay, okay, so you are officially
For the betterment of this school board. So it's Sarah and Dr. Martin.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing no other nominations, the motion to close nominations is in order. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll, and each member, please state the name of the candidate whom you support for the role of Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board. Ms. Tanner.
Basine.
Pass.
Sarah.
Calagiro.
Yes, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, you were calling me Sarah DeCalagiro. I apologize.
Martin.
Dr. Martin.
Paulson.
Dr. Martin.
Thomas.
Sarah.
Okay, candidate number one, Dr. Martin, has two votes. Candidate number two, Sarah DeCalagiro.
She didn't go back to Ms. Basine.
Okay, sorry.
Want to go back to Basine? Basine.
DeCalagiro.
Okay, so candidate number one, Dr. Martin, has two votes, and candidate number two, Ms. DeCalagiro, has, okay, I must have miscounted, four votes, I am so sorry. I counted five, but I see four. Okay, all right, so congratulations, Ms. DeCalagiro, you are now the new Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
I would like for her to sit here.
Okay. That's good. More steps in today.
I'll take it. I just ran off my laptop.
I'll help you, go ahead, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'm turning the meeting over to you.
Recession for a couple, like two or three minutes.
Yes, and you can call for that, ma'am. You're the official chair.
I'd like to call for a three-minute recess.
So call the roll.
Aye.
Ms. Tanner, for a vote.
Oh, Ms. Tanner.
It's going to recess.
To go into recess.
We can do that.
Three minutes, point order, you're saying three minutes, okay?
Recession for how long?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
DeCalagiro.
Aye.
Paulson.
No, I want 15.
Nay. Thompson.
Three minutes is not long enough.
Do you need more than three?
Do you want to amend?
Well, I, we've started the vote, so I can't amend.
Can I rescind that and ask for a 10-minute recess?
So you want a 10-minute recess?
Thank you, Ms. Chair.
She just want to amend the motion?
I want to amend that to a 10-minute recess.
A 10-minute recess, okay.
In that case, I, for the amendment and for taking votes, I support that vote. Thank you.
Basine.
Aye.
Buffalo.
Aye.
DeCalagiro.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
And Thomas.
The same rooms are available for you. The same staff are available for you. Nominations are now in order for the Office of Vice Chair of the School Board.
I nominate, oh, excuse me. Are we writing? I'm sorry. I nominate Ms. Thomas.
Thomas is nominated. Are there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo is nominated. Are there other nominations? If not, the motion to close nominations is in order. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I think you have to do a roll call vote.
Or just on closing the nomination.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries and the floor is closed for nominations. Ms. Tanner, please call the roll and each member, please state the name of the candidate for which you support for Vice Chair of the School Board.
Mrs. Moore Buffalo. Moore Buffalo.
Thomas. Thomas.
Ms. Thomas.
Ms. Thomas.
Candidate number one was Ms. Thomas. And she has four votes. Candidate number two was Mrs. Moore Buffalo and she has two votes. Congratulations to Ms. Alfreda Thomas on your appointment as Vice Chair of the City of Norfolk School Board. Now, we have a recommendation from Dr. Birdsong for School Board Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would like to recommend Karen Tanner to serve as the City of Norfolk School Board Clerk for the 2025 calendar year.
That goes to a vote?
Yes.
A roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Martin.
Aye.
Paulson.
Aye.
That, the, this, Ms. Tanner, I mean, Ms. Tanner, Ms. Tanner, congratulations. Now, I'm going to ask Dr. Birdsong for a recommendation of the superintendent's designees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to recommend the following staff members, administrators, to serve as my designees. I'd like to recommend Dr. Michael Cataldo, who serves as the Chief Student Safety Support and Information Officer. Actually, it's Chief Student Safety Support and Information Officer. Dr. James Poole, our Chief Academic Officer, and Dr. Doretha White, our Chief Strategy Innovation and Community Engagement Officer.
Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Aye. 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 Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to call Dr. Poole up to talk about School Board Goal Number Five, enter measures numbers one and two.
May I? I missed the point, I guess, when we were going to see if there were any amendments to the agenda, because I have some items that were supposed to be on the agenda and they're not. And I'd like to discuss those now. Or when appropriate, but what I'm saying is I'd like to have that time to make the amendment. I don't know when that would have been, but we missed it.
Oh, we can do it now.
Okay. I'll provide each of you a copy of the amendments I'm proposing to the agenda for today's agenda.
Thank you, sir.
We have some significant events that are coming up and we have not discussed them. And I want to put these on the agenda so we can discuss it. I, if you notice, one and two, for those of you who don't have a copy, it says significant current events, which is not a discussion item. And number two, the organizational meeting, we're in the middle of it, so that is not a discussion item. But what I want to discuss, which has appeared on the agenda now, is the board member application process. So number three can be stricken from my list. Number four, the right sizing of the school facilities. I'd ask at the last meeting that we take this on and recognize it. And it's not on, so I want to discuss that at appropriate time on today's agenda. Also, the joint meeting with the City Council. It is not here and we need to discuss that. That's in our future and we need to respond to the request. And then also, in the last meeting, we talked about updating the cell phone policy as needed in the future after we review it. But I don't see it being on the future agendas. So I want to make sure that we have that on there at an appropriate time for review of the current policy we just passed. So those are the items I'd like to add to the agenda.
You would like to add agent, item number five.
Four, five, and six.
From your list.
Actually, it says four, five, and four, and it should be four, five, and six, the last.
I was, I was, I was going on that.
Yeah, thank you.
This, I don't know if that requires, you, you're proposing an amendment to the agenda?
To today's agenda, an amendment.
Does that require?
To add those, those three items.
Well, one of those items is being discussed in 4.04.
Oh, number four, five, and six.
Oh, four, five, and six.
Six, yeah, four, five, and six are the three agenda items I want to add. Those others, I, when I printed this, I failed to remove those. Those are not agenda items.
Is, I think this would require a second for an amendment to the agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
This will require a vote to add them to the agenda, so Ms. Tanner, will you please call the roll?
Basine.
Nay.
Buffalo.
Pass, come back to me, please.
DeCalagiro.
Pass. Come back, please.
Martin.
Yes.
Paulson.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Buffalo.
This, I want to ask a question. I don't have a problem with these things being on the agenda, but what timeframe are we looking at as far as this evening? Because right sizing, it will be a very depth discussion. What specifically, Mr. Paulson, were you talking about right sizing? Like?
In the work session, we can address each other directly and speak. Okay, thank you. The intent is to recognize that we have to deal with this issue. We are not going to begin on it because the process set up by Dr. Birdsong and the school of this committee has not even formed and functioned yet. But it's the steps that we are going to take as a board in the future. And recognize that we have to come up with a plan and get that motive going. And I have a real rough outline of that just to show you so we can move forward.
Alright, so I guess we can discuss the Phase Two facility outcomes that we got, timeline we got last year. So we can, I guess, circle back on that, that the board received last year as it relates to right sizing. Joint meeting with City Council is pretty much just Dr. Birdsong scheduling with, across the street with the clerk. Coming up with a date and time for us to come together, that's.
Amy.
Madam Chair, come in.
Oh.
I was going to suggest that we hear from Dr. Birdsong for the plans.
So, thank you, Mr. Paulson. I definitely appreciate you bringing these agenda items to the board for a discussion. And so I believe it is next month or so that we are prepared. I'd like an opportunity, because we have not done this in agenda planning. So now that you've mentioned it today, I would like to reach out to our contractor to have him come in to provide an update to the school board, so we can arrange that so that the board can be prepared to discuss the recommendations and move forward with voting on those recommendations. In addition to that, you are absolutely correct. The administration has been working to secure members of that steering committee and we're doing that work right now. And those recommendations will be presented to the school board in an upcoming meeting. And so you just need to know that the work continues to be done and you're absolutely right that this information needs to be shared with the board so you can move forward. And as it relates to scheduling a meeting with City Council, we're more than happy to do that if that is what the board would like to do. We're more than happy at any time to work with the council because we appreciate a productive working relationship with the city manager and council and the mayor.
Thank you. And I think everybody wants the working relationship. It's a matter of, we've been asked a couple times to consider this and plan it. But time's running out because of the significant events that are coming, the appointment, the budget, et cetera, et cetera. We, our timeline is limited and we do need to make an informed decision. But this is just to get us recognize that we have to do this and not say, well, we'll take it up. We need to put it on someplace on the calendar soon to get it done. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I anticipate meeting with our new Chair and Vice Chair in the immediate future so that we can designate agenda planning time so that we can have this discussion around timelines around all of this important work. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where are we with the roll call?
Yes.
Do I need to come back and say?
Yes. It was at me.
You for Buffalo, yes? And DeCalagiro, are you saying yes? Adding it, what he's just discussed?
So these items will be added to the agenda?
I guess I'm a little unclear, so it sounded like we came up with some solutions to these items. So I'm not sure if they need to remain on the agenda because we just heard from Dr. Birdsong about some possible actions.
When you guys made for agenda planning with Dr. Birdsong, you'll lay out when.
These will be on the next agenda.
Correct.
Will that work for you?
No, the board member application process needs to be, that's, excuse me, I forgot that there was a change to the agenda. Thank you for correcting me.
That is on the agenda for this evening.
But the others, I think that recognizing them in the public eye, particularly right sizing of the facilities, which has been on the books for years and that we are going to deal with. We, as a board, now own it. We are going to do something about it. And I think that's the important message. And if we get it on the schedule, then we can go from there. Thank you. I appreciate everybody's support. Thank you.
So let's move on to agenda item number four.
Should I withdraw my motion then? Is that, that would be the property, okay. You guys had to help me. Guys, so I withdraw my motion for the addition to the agenda for today. Thank you.
Now, let's move on to agenda item number four, student excellence.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Poole will come forward and he will give us an update on School Board Goal Number Five and our measures numbers one and two, all about our advancement towards meeting the goals established around advanced studies diplomas. So, Dr. Poole.
Thank you, Dr. Birdsong, and good afternoon, Madam Chair, DeCalagiro, Vice Chair Ms. Thomas, members of the board, and Dr. Birdsong, and all others present virtually or in person. So as Dr. Birdsong said tonight, we're going to review two of our measures for Goal Five, which is focused on increasing our percentage of NPS graduates receiving advanced studies diplomas to meet or exceed the state average by the end of SY 2627 with our class of 27. Measure four point, 5.1 specifically lays out 47% of the 2027 graduating cohort will successfully complete the appropriate courses to be on track to graduate with advanced studies diploma by the end of SY 2425. As the data show, and I'll, let me put the graph on here as well. As the data show, the 2027 cohort has a lower rate than the first quarter of SY 24 by 7.9 points. This places them off track of reaching the original goal by 51.5% based on the metric devised by this measure. And currently, the highest percentage of the 2027 cohort can reach by the end of this year is 47%. Again, based on this metric for this measure and based on their course enrollment. The, what is going well, well, the 2027 cohort, our current 10th grade students, just to remind everybody about that, is 9.4 points higher for quarter one than the 2026 cohort was last year for quarter one as 10th grade students. So we may not be obtaining the target at this point, but we are, we've seen tremendous amount of growth from last year's cohort with this year's cohort, so we're seeing improvements. A few things that are not going well within the data, English and mathematics have the highest failure rates for our students for first quarter of 2027. And although the 2027 cohort is outperforming the 2026 cohort for the same timeframe, they're still below their initial data point of 44.8% by 7.7%. So when you look at the graph here, you'll see their initial data point was 44.8% and we've dropped to 37.1% at the end of the first quarter right now. So that's what that data points out. And the number of students enrolled in a Level One foreign language course by their second year of high school has limited their ability to reach the advanced diploma. If you recall, when we first started discussing the data around this, that the foreign language is one of the biggest gatekeepers right now for our students, being able to complete that within four years on the schedule that we currently have right now. Because if they don't complete it by sophomore year with an AB schedule, they cannot complete that requirement of three years of one or two and two. So some of the next steps to continue to help this, the cohorts grow. Using the district recommended remediation practices and post-test procedures that allow students to improve their grades and works towards mastery during the quarters and not following the quarters. Using district recommended backwards design protocols to ensure alignment between the written, taught, and tested curriculum. Providing timely feedback to students and parents and stakeholders. Centrally, create and share lists of students in the 2027 cohort who are off track. So school counselors can conduct small group and one-on-one counseling sessions to assist with tracking student performance and providing needed supports. Continue the academic and career planning sessions using major clarity. And incorporate data from AP potential as additional resource to guide the scheduling process. AP potential connects to a student's PSAT scores. So if, when they, when they take the PSAT, AP potential tells them where they have a strong potential of being successful in an advanced placement class. So using that data even more with our students to make sure that they're enrolling where they should. And then monitor the current course selection process and encourage students in the 2027 cohort to pursue the advanced coursework needed for the advanced studies diplomas they continue throughout high school for their next couple of years. And that process is going on right now for our high school students. So I'll pause at the end of 5.1 for any questions and comments before going to 5.2.
Question. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You go first?
Nope. New guy, new guy question. What is major clarity?
Good question. So major clarity is, it is a way for students to do academic and career planning. So it's an online tool where students can map out where they're going and connect it to college readiness or career pathways. And to make sure they're taking the courses to be successful.
Thank you.
Oh. You have a question?
Yes.
Sorry. Chair recognizes Ms. Macine.
So, thank you, Dr. Poel. So you talked a little bit about, and we've heard this before, you know, some of the reasons for why we're lagging behind. And I hear world languages and a higher failure rate in English and mathematics. And can you talk a little more about the root cause analysis that's done to really go a little deeper as to who's mostly impacted or who's struggling more than others? And then follow, following that, you know, what strategies are in place? Or the why? If you could tell us a little more about the why, why there is that failure rate, for instance?
So generally, traditionally, data-wise, first quarter, we do see higher failure rates across the board with our high school students, and specifically ninth and 10th graders. And these, this is our 10th grade cohort with 2027. As far as, I don't have the data in front of me as far as specific subgroups where failure rates might be higher or lower at this point. However, the how behind it and what we're doing to support it is the continued use of our hired tutors, our university instructors, FEV tutor, the teachers tutoring. The, all the schools have their, all the high schools have their safety net funds as well. So teachers can start tutoring as well. And then using the data, the real data from software that we use, like Edmentum or Lexia, to pinpoint different needs with our high school students. And then this year, if you recall, and it doesn't count for the 2027 cohort necessarily, but we also added ninth grade reading tutors to our high schools to make sure that we're really attacking literacy at the high school level where we've seen some weakness in the past. So that will also go far with this, to continue improving this goal beyond the 2027 cohort, which I'm sure we're all in favor of. So, you know, items such as that to be in place to make sure the students are getting the supports that they need.
Okay.
And sorry, one more thing too, I'm sorry. But so, you know, specifically as well, historically, you know, our students with disabilities struggle. And one of the things we focused on again this year is with the professional development with them, collaborating with content so that there's an instructional and a compliance piece to our special ed services.
See, that was going to be the next, one of my next questions. The other thing is about the strategy. So you talked a lot about the strategies that you're putting in place. How are you going to, how are we going to know that that, those strategies are working and are getting us closer to, you know, where we want to be?
So, the Edmentum and Lexia, the university instructors and the one-on-one tutoring, they're evidence-based strategies. So they are, they're working, they're ones that the states also picked to use. And the, you know, it's, we go down to the student by student level. So it's not where if everyone on the board was failing math at this point, we're not going to give you all the same exact level of remediation, right? We're going to, we're going to look down to the specific standards where you need the help. In fact, data-wise, principals have access and February teachers will have access because this is new to a data platform that they can dig down to the standard and look at their class and the specific standards where their strength and weakness, and be able to do small group instruction at the high school level to help as well. So really getting them down to the root of the data per student, that's going to make the biggest difference.
Any other questions? Thank you. We can move on to the second.
All right. Thank you. And good afternoon, everybody again. So this, same goal, but this measure focuses on our current junior class or cohort 2026. Let me make that a little bit bigger for us. And here, the measure is 35% of the 2026 graduating cohort will successfully complete the appropriate courses to be on track to graduate with an advanced studies diploma by the end of 2425. And I would like to remind the board and the public again, when we put this goal in place, we knew it was more long-term. And this, this group of students already were in sophomore year and world language was already, you know, we couldn't encourage them to do it anymore. So we, our numbers are going to be a little bit lower for this group as they have been. As the data show here, and I'll put the graph on here as well when I talk about this. The 2026 cohort has a higher rate for the first quarter of SY 24 by 2.2 points. Currently, the highest percentage of the 2026 cohort can reach by the end is 35% on this metric. And that's again, based on their, their current course enrollments. And what is going well? Well, there are a few things here as well. Although their, the 2026 cohort is lower than their final rate for last year, they are above the starting point from last year. So they're beginning a little bit stronger. Therefore, if the growth through this year is consistent with last year, they'll complete the year at a higher rate. So we want to see that graph to continue to go up. Failure rates for the 2026 cohort are less than 5% for English, Science, and History. All students in 2026 cohort have met their credit requirements for health and PE. So they finished them all in ninth and 10th grade as they should, and they have those credits. And only 1% of the cohort is failing their world language course. However, again, you know, there, there are implications where students just might not be enrolled in it, which is why that number that we can reach is a little bit lower. And then what is not going well? The students in this cohort have a higher failure rate in their math courses than other core subjects. And from the end of last year to the end of the first quarter this year, the rate for the 2026 cohort dropped by 2.2 points. Enrollment in the Level Two Foreign Language class continues to be a barrier for these students in their third year of high school to reach an advanced studies diploma. And next steps are pretty similar, using the recommended remediation practices, the backwards design, timely feedback, and then creating the lists and sharing them, which for first quarter, we've rolled those out already. Ensuring student schedules follow the division course sequence, where they take their history and required sciences each year, nine through 12, to make sure they stay on track. The academic and career planning using major clarity, the AP potential, and then monitoring the current course selection as they go into their senior year to make sure that we can keep the number as high as possible. And that concludes measure 5.1.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Macine?
Well, I'll let Mrs. Moore Buffalo. Hello, Dr. Poel.
Hello, Mrs. Moore Buffalo.
What do you, what can you say that, what's, what is not going well? You state that the enrollment in Level Two Foreign Language class continues to be a barrier. What is that?
So with a student, if they're not in a Level Two Foreign Language class by their junior year, they can't complete three years of a language. So that locks them out automatically of an advanced study. This one, that one course in a traditional AB schedule knocks them out because senior year, they can only take one more language. So if a student took like Spanish I sophomore year and didn't want to or couldn't fit it in their scheduled junior year, they can only take Spanish II senior year, and they have to have three years to get the advanced studies.
Ms., Dr. Martin?
What about if they took Virtual Virginia or over the summer to catch up?
That's one of the only possibilities to be able to catch back up. And we just try not to put that in our metrics because we're going to make sure that we're following data that we believe to be the most true.
Do we have any data on the percentage of students who can't get the course because of scheduling?
There's not, there's none of them that can't get it because of scheduling, unless there's a choice that they're trying to make between, if, let's say, if student wanted to take, a junior is going to NTC, and then they want to also take a different elective course, it might tighten it up where they go. So, you know, your students at NTC, they take four core classes at the high school level, and then they spend a full day at NTC. So that would be the majority of them. Or some students who may want to take like a music theory and an instrument class, where they're using two of their classes for music and not doing the world language. So it just depends on their choice at this area. And again, you know, the advanced studies, it's a, it's a strong diploma, but it doesn't hold them out of academics beyond high school. So, you know, sometimes they weigh that choice a little bit differently as a student.
Other questions? Dr., Ms. Macine?
Thank you, Dr. Poel. So my questions are, you know, very similar, and I expect the response to be similar as well. But can you, can you talk about the impact of teacher vacancy rates on the failure rates that we're seeing? Does that have, is that playing a role? And what resources may we need to, to alleviate the impact that our vacancy rates are having on, on our students being able to?
So again, I don't have the data right in front of me about specific, you know, where there might be a long-term sub in place and not a teacher, full-time teacher, and the failure rates necessarily. And I will say, sometimes it plays a role, sometimes it doesn't. You know, sometimes it's not necessarily the failure rate in that instance that does it. But I think with our, with our staffing and the, and the use of associate teachers and the professional development plan that we put forward with our zero and one-year teach, first-year teachers, the mentoring that we have in place, the support from our CNI team, and then from Dr. Walter's team going out specifically to support teachers at the high school level. You know, we have as many boots on the ground as we can. And then the use of, again, some UI tutors to help where necessary, adding the ninth grade reading tutors to the high school as well, and giving as many supports as we can is the best way to tackle that.
If there is data on that, you know, I would encourage us to look at that and also, you know, bring the board, you know, up to speed on that so that we're ensuring that we have equitable allocation of resources at our schools.
Any questions? Thomas? Do you have any questions, Miss Thomas?
No, I do not.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to agenda item 4.02, four-by-four block scheduling for high schools.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to ask Amber Brown, who is already approaching the podium, to come forward to provide a presentation on our initiative, perhaps more likely than not, for next school year. And it's four-by-four block scheduling. And I also want to recognize our illustrious high school principals. All five high school principals with us tonight, would you please stand to be recognized? Thank you so much for being here. We're really excited about this initiative. Our high school principals have been talking about this for a couple of years now. And so we are glad to be before you today to share some updates with you. And I know you'll have questions, and we are more than happy to address those questions. Principals, thank you for your hard work each and every day. Know that we appreciate all that you do each and every day for our students. Thank you very much. Ms. Brown?
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair Decalagero, Vice Chair Thomas, Dr. Birdsong, and all of our Norfolk Public Schools families, staff, and community members who are joining us this evening. My name is Amber Brown, and I proudly serve as the Chief Schools Officer for Norfolk Public Schools. And this evening, I'm excited to share information on the hybrid four-by-four block scheduling model and the benefits and opportunities it will provide our students and staff members. We'll begin by comparing the three most implemented high school scheduling models. Each offers different approaches to organizing the school day and academic year. The year-long AB alternating day schedule is the model currently used in Norfolk Public Schools. Students are enrolled in eight courses that are split into A and B days, alternating between two sets of classes across the entire school year. Students typically attend four classes on one day and then four classes on the next day, alternating throughout. The four-by-four semester block schedule offers four courses per semester with a total of eight courses completed in one academic year. This model allows students to take a deeper dive into course content by providing the opportunity to take an introductory level course as well as an advanced course within that same year. And then there's the hybrid four-by-four block. This is a combination of scheduling approaches which includes elements of the AB alternating day and four-by-four block models. It's tailored to balance course intensity and flexibility for students and for staff. Students in Virginia have the opportunity to earn the advanced studies diploma, as we heard about a few moments ago, a standard diploma or an applied studies diploma. To earn the advanced studies diploma, a student needs a minimum of 26 standard credits and five verified credits. For a standard diploma, the requirement is at least 22 standard credits and five verified credits. Students on an applied studies track must be identified as a student with special needs. Standard credits are awarded upon successful completion of required and elective courses, while verified courses are granted when students pass required courses and their corresponding end-of-year SOL assessment. When evaluating scheduling models, it's essential to not only determine the graduation requirements for each diploma option in Virginia, but also ensure these students have several opportunities in which to meet these requirements. Divisions must also ensure that schools are meeting the state and federal accountability requirements. Earlier this school year, Ms. McGarrett, our Senior Coordinator of Assessment, Research, and Accountability, presented information to the board on several changes to Virginia's new accountability model. This shift has required school divisions to further analyze data and identify research-based practices and procedures that will not only accelerate student learning, but also stretch individual academic growth and ensure students have the knowledge, skills, and dispositions needed to graduate high school ready for enrollment in college, employment in a high-wage, high-demand field, or enlistment in the military. The hybrid four-by-four block scheduling model supports these goals by combining semester-based learning with year-long consistency for core subjects, promoting engagement, attendance, and overall student achievement. This approach ensures that no matter what, our students are equipped to succeed in the classroom and beyond. Virginia's unveiling of the new accountability model for public schools provided the opportunity to evaluate ways that we are not only accelerating student learning to fill gaps, but also providing additional opportunities to access rigorous college coursework. Our leadership teams conducted SWOT analyses to determine the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and potential threats that may be associated with implementing a four-by-four model. To review the strengths, the implementation of a four-by-four semester block schedule aligns with practices in other districts within the region, particularly in the 757 area, supporting broader educational initiatives. The schedule structure facilitates on-time graduation efforts by enabling students to recover credits more efficiently and allowing for targeted support of accelerated learning. Attendance tracking and relationship building between students and staff are also enhanced as students focus on fewer courses, reducing stress and enabling stronger connections with teachers every day. Additionally, the model fosters faster gratification by allowing students to see progress in shorter timeframes. The system also supports specialized interventions by providing more time for targeted student groups and reduces the teacher workload. A four-by-four semester model also allows students to take more college-level coursework, which may potentially increase grade point averages used for college. which may potentially increase grade point averages used for colleges and scholarship applications, allowing our Norfolk Public School students to remain competitive with other schools within our region. Weaknesses: Despite its many benefits, it's important to identify potential weaknesses in the hybrid four-by-four scheduling model. One concern centered around the scheduling of courses such as math and foreign languages and the potential for extended gaps of time between courses. To proactively address these concerns, extensive training will be provided to teachers and counselors on how to minimize learning gaps and best practices for student scheduling. Attendance will be another area of focus, as this could be, this could potentially become a concern if students miss several consecutive days. This will require our division to ensure students are provided the opportunity to access coursework and assistance while out. Finally, athletic eligibility calculations and teacher preparations will require some recalibration. Opportunities: The shift to a four-by-four hybrid semester block schedule provides a wealth of opportunities to improve academic outcomes and system flexibility. Increased dual enrollment options could provide students with greater access to college-level coursework. Structured recovery programs and enhanced flexibility with online learning platforms can support diverse learning needs. Priority scheduling for study halls, early graduations, and a targeted focus on seniors in need during semester two could improve student success. Offering four full-year algebra courses daily and expanding opportunities for advanced diplomas are significant advantages to this model. Lastly, the use of programs like ROTC as an alternative to PE and health is also important. As we heard earlier this evening in Dr. Poole's presentation for School Board Goal Five, some students currently experience difficulty fitting in a world language before their junior year. A hybrid four-by-four schedule provides this additional opportunity to meet the Advanced Studies diploma requirements wanted by our school board. Threats: When considering any new process, procedure, or model, it's important to identify potential threats that must be addressed prior to implementation. Pacing adjustment for teachers and the need for extensive professional development must be prioritized. Clear communication to families and staff is also essential as we make this transition together. Lastly, student attendance will be prioritized, and it will remain an area of focus. The hybrid four-by-four block scheduling model seamlessly integrates comprehensive academic programming with flexibility, enhanced preparation, and opportunities for student choice. This model combines four-by-four semester blocks for most courses with year-long schedules for AP, dual enrollment courses, international baccalaureate courses, and of course, our fine and performing arts. Additional year-long options may be provided for other courses such as ROTC and select math and CTE courses. This approach ensures students benefit from focused coursework and recovery opportunities while maintaining the rigor, continuity, and the depth required for specialized and advanced programs. Furthermore, this hybrid model aligns with our goal of supporting diverse student needs while fostering academic success and engagement. So, I'd like to help visualize what a hybrid four-by-four block schedule may look like in a four-year sample schedule that's been created for three different situations. We will call these students Student A, B, and C. So, let's begin with Student A. In Grade Nine, the Grade Nine schedule introduces students to foundational high school courses in a balanced four-by-four block format. In the fall semester, students take English IX, or may take, students may take English IX, Intro to Art, for example, World Geography, and an elective such as keyboarding. During the spring semester, their focus may shift to Health and PE, Algebra I, Spanish I, and Environmental Science. Again, this is a sample schedule with different courses that are provided. The schedule emphasizes building essential skills across academic areas, arts, and physical education while incorporating the foreign language and computer literacy. In Tenth Grade, the schedule builds upon skills established in Grade Nine, continuing with English X, Geometry, Cyber Security, and Spanish II in the Fall Semester. In the Spring Semester, students would take Health and PE X, for example, Biology, World History I, and Spanish III. By the end of Grade Three, they have finished their world language requirements for an advanced diploma. This structure allows students to advance in mathematics, science, and history while gaining practical skills in cybersecurity and progressing their foreign language studies. Onward to Eleventh Grade, the Eleventh Grade schedule provides opportunities for students to delve deeper into subjects aligned with graduation requirements and personal interests. The Fall Semester includes English XI, Algebra Functions and Data Analysis, one of our math courses, and two electives, allowing for exploration of varied academic or vocational pathways. The Spring Semester includes courses like Economics and Personal Finance, Ecology, Virginia-US History, and an additional elective. The schedule ensures a strong mix of academic rigor and flexibility. In Grade Twelve, the schedule's designed to prepare students for post-secondary or career readiness while completing final graduation requirements. In the Fall Semester, students would take English XII, Chemistry, and two electives, providing a balance of core subjects and tailored learning opportunities. In the Spring Semester, the focus shifts to Government, Algebra II, and two additional electives, allowing these students to refine their skills and explore interests before graduation. The schedule supports a well-rounded and personalized senior year experience. And then we have Sample Student Two. This is Student B. Student B is on track to earn an advanced diploma. The student has a learning disability in math and benefits from year-long courses in mathematics when possible. In Grade Nine, Student B takes Algebra I every day for the entire year. To ensure the student has the support needed, she receives Special Education Service through a resource block that is offered every other day during the school year. It alternates with Health and PE IX. The remaining courses are taken in one semester, World Geography, English IX and Spanish I, and Spanish I and Environmental Science in Semester II. In Grade Ten, Student B is scheduled for only semester courses. A math resource block is scheduled for the same semester she is taking Geometry to ensure the student receives the services and support needed while enrolled in a math course. The student is also taking English X and Spanish II for semester. Second semester courses include Health and PE X, Biology, World History I, and Spanish III, again, completing that world language requirement by the end of the Tenth Grade Year. In Grade Eleven, the schedule incorporates a blend of semester and year-long courses to ensure Student B receives math support for the duration of her math class. Two elective blocks are also reflective in the schedule to allow for student interest and choice. And finally, in Grade Twelve, the schedule continues with a year-long math course, Algebra II, alternating with math resource. Due to the student's ability to double up on courses during the Ninth, Tenth, and Eleventh Grade Years, additional blocks are now available for elective courses and advanced coursework. This is one of the greatest advantages of the hybrid model. And our last student this evening for a sample schedule, Student C, enters high school on an advanced pathway, having taken several high school credit-bearing courses in middle schools such as Algebra I, Geometry, Spanish I, and Environmental Science. The Ninth Grade Schedule introduces students to both foundational and advanced coursework. In the Fall Semester, students focus on Health and PE IX, alternating with Music for the year as an elective, an elective course, Spanish II, and AP Human Geography, which also alternates with AP Environmental Science for the year. This student continues in the spring their year-long courses and transition to Honors Algebra II and Honors English IX to support a balanced academic experience. In Grade Ten, the schedule builds upon the foundations set in Grade Nine with an emphasis on advanced courses. The Fall Semester includes AP English X Seminar paired with Music for the Year, AP Precalculus, which also alternates with AP World Studies I for the year, and Spanish III and Honors Biology. The Spring Semester continues the year-long long coursework and includes Health and PE X, which, and Honors Chemistry. The Grade Eleven Schedule incorporates a blend of rigorous AP courses and elective options. The student's schedule reflects only A/B alternating year-long coursework during the junior year due to the number of AP courses taken. This schedule would look the same as it currently does in Norfolk Public Schools. The Grade Twelve Schedule continues with an alternating-year AP schedule. This schedule emphasizes advanced coursework and flexibility to prepare students for post-graduation success. The year-long courses include AP English Literature, AP Calculus BC, AP Chemistry, and Flex Blocks for personalized learning and internships, which may involve dual enrollment courses or possibly coursework through Tidewater Community College. The Norfolk Technical Center will also restructure to support a semester schedule. Students attending NTC will shift from an alternating-day schedule to an AM/PM semester model, which was done prior in Norfolk Public Schools. Level One courses will be scheduled in the mornings, and Level Two courses will be scheduled in the afternoons, allowing students to participate in internship experiences. The NORSTAR program will not be impacted by the shift to the hybrid four-by-four model. Students who are enrolled in the Governor's School for the Arts will also not be impacted by the shift to the hybrid four-by-four block schedule. The majority of schools who participate in this program in the area already operate in a similar model of four-by-four. The advantages of the hybrid four-by-four model are numerous, and they include acceleration and remediation. This model provides flexibility to support students at both ends of the academic spectrum. Students who excel can accelerate their progress by taking advanced or additional courses, while those needing additional help can focus on remediation and acceleration through targeted support during shorter semesters. Additional electives: By fewer, by offering fewer courses at a time, students have room in their schedules to explore a wider range of electives. This allows them to discover new interests and develop skills in diverse areas such as Fine Arts, Technology, and Vocational Studies. Internships and work-based learning: The structure of the hybrid model creates opportunities for students to engage in real-world learning experiences like internship or work-based learning programs. These opportunities help students build career readiness and apply their learning in practical settings. Improved retention and mastery: Concentration on fewer courses in a block schedule allows students to dive deeper into the material, improving content retention, and it also minimizes distractions, enabling students to focus more effectively on their studies. Also, fewer courses at one time: With a streamlined schedule, students take only a limited number of courses each semester. This reduces the overall course workload, leading to decreased stress and allowing students to manage their time and responsibilities more effectively. It also benefits teachers by enabling them to concentrate their efforts on fewer students per term and often fewer preps per term. Additional advantages include strengthened teacher-student relationships. The hybrid model allows teachers to work closely with fewer students per semester every single day, enabling more meaningful interactions and personalized support. This fosters stronger relationships, and it contributes to student success both academically and emotionally. Improved student engagement: With a focused course load, students can dedicate more time and effort to fewer subjects, reducing overwhelm and improving engagement. The block format also supports varied instructional methods, such as hands-on activities and in-depth projects. Student choice: The flexibility of the hybrid model provides students with more opportunities to choose courses that align with their interests and career goals. Whether through electives, AP courses, dual enrollment options, students can tailor their schedules to fit their aspirations. And lastly, increased opportunities for college coursework. The hybrid model accommodates AP/DE, International Baccalaureate IB courses, and ensures that students have access to rigorous college-level content while maintaining a balanced workload. This approach better prepares students for post-secondary education and career readiness. These advantages make the hybrid model an effective solution for addressing diverse student needs while fostering academic excellence. Students and teachers have also voiced their opinions of the model. One student states, "I prefer the four-by-four schedule because I feel it gives me more time to focus on my given courses rather than having more courses to focus on in a week. When I transferred from Portsmouth to Norfolk, I noticed I've struggled with the schedule because of my lack of focus to one subject and how many I have to take on in one week." A former four-by-four teacher at Norview High School states, "Faster pace of teaching will help students stay engaged. Since the classes will be held every day, students will retain the material learned previously a lot more." More courses can be offered to the students because of the shorter semester courses. And finally, another student notes, "It's easier to manage four classes. I struggled with eight classes and did much better at Churchlin. Now that I'm transferring back to Norfolk, I'm a little nervous about having eight classes again." At this time, I'd like to thank our high school principals who truly have brought this forward. Mr. Dion Garner at Booker T. Washington High School, Mr. Tommy Smigle at Granby High School, Dr. Letitia Wade Jenkins at Lake Taylor High School, Ms. Karen Berg at Maury High School, and Dr. Tori Jacob Sumbry at Norview High School. This model has been requested by all five of our high school principals who are here this evening to not only show their support, but a few have chosen to speak out. I would like to provide this opportunity for any of them to come forward if they so choose to share their perspective. And we have a winner.
High school principals never miss the opportunity to speak.
They're going to be my support chairs. So, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, congratulations. School Board members and Dr. Birdsong, thank you for giving us the opportunity this forum to speak about something that we've become very passionate about the last two years. Dr. Birdsong, especially thanking to you for listening to us. When we brought this to your attention, you allowed us to continue the work with your staff and to bring it to this point, and we're excited about having this conversation today with this. So, one thing, we chose today to wear our school spirit gear to bring our school spirit to you. While we are all competitors on the field, or the court, or the track, or the pool, we are aligned and together with this recommendation. That has not always been the case. Four-by-four discussions have been going on since I started as an assistant principal back in 2008. And it was Granby High School, Ted Dotteri, some of you know Mr. Dotteri, who fought to the district on not moving to four-by-four because of the International Baccalaureate Program and the impact that it would have on it. At that time, the idea of a hybrid four-by-four was not really being discussed. It was that traditional four-by-four. Since then, and workshops and presentations that I've been to as an IB principal, there are thousands of schools in the United States that operate on a four-by-four schedule and have an IB program. So, the holdout of Granby now is supportive and has joined the other four schools in supporting this model. Ms. Macine, you had discussed about a root cause analysis. So, a couple of years ago, when we were developing our comprehensive school support plans, and we do our CNAs, our Comprehensive Needs Assessment, or School Needs Assessment, we do a root cause analysis. And we found that it's a different type of kid that we have coming to us today. The motivation to succeed and graduate and go on to college or postgraduate work is not as much there as it used to be. And so, in our root cause analysis, we started looking at ideas and models, particularly when it comes to flexibility. And all of my colleagues will agree that this model allows that flexibility, but also because this generation, our kids now, they like that instant gratification. They want to know right now how they did. And for many of our students who would be on the four-by-four model and not the full-year model, this will give them that. And if not, if they're not successful, it allows us the opportunity to recover much quicker than waiting a full year to support the student. We will support them all year, but then we have to wait for summer school and then see how that goes. But now, we can do that much quickly. It also gives a lot more opportunity for us to push some dual enrollment classes and advanced work, which advanced work, which we are all very supportive of. Many of us now are seeing multiple applications or requests for students to graduate early, and so this is another opportunity for us to keep students in Norfolk Public Schools longer, but give them those higher-level courses because they can finish quickly. In fact, Ms. Berg may share with you that there's quite a few students at Maury High School that like to graduate in January. And so now, they could stay students at Maury High School, but they could continue their education at TCC if they wanted to, and they would still remain as part of that. And so, we would all like to be able to offer that model. So, we, we've been doing a lot of outreach. We've spoken to our staff members, we've spoken to our students, there's been a lot of parent outreach. A lot of the concerns that we've heard are mainly about individual programs at our schools and the impact. And once we answer those questions, it's usually, okay, so really, this doesn't impact an IB student because they still can do full year or AP. The learning gap piece, but as you heard earlier from Ms. Brown, is that even in world languages now, we can have students completed in three years, two years, because they can complete year two and three in their second year. But the final piece of this is that new accountability system, which actually President Biden just signed, Virginia, and agreed with their accountability system. There is a huge emphasis on two areas for the high school level that's a little bit different than middle and elementary. First is that 15% of our accreditation is on on-time graduation for advanced and standard diplomas only. So, the applied studies, we do not get a point for those students. We will on a 5% for a Virginia graduation rate. But the other part of this is 25% of our accreditation is on something called the three Es: employment, enlistment, and engagement. And I just want you to imagine on a four-by-four schedule, that we actually can have students now who can complete an industry certification in one year instead of waiting for two years, and because of that, they can actually get a second industry certification or even a third before they graduate, because they can complete that sequencing in those elective courses within one year. And so, we're really excited about the opportunity to earn some of those additional points that we can get in the three Es and help prepare our students for beyond high school, which is all of our goal, which is why we're aligned together on this, even though, like I said, we are competitors. Okay, Karen, we know you're the best football team.
That's another meeting.
Yes, yeah, another meeting. But I don't know if any of my other colleagues would like to speak, but we're all here to answer questions for, as well. And Ms. Brown, I'll turn it back over to you.
I just think it's also important to mention, and I know Mr. Smigle said...
Turn the microphone over, please. Thank you.
As the senior of the group, I've been through four other colleagues, and there were times where there was not the working together, the agreement, and the collaborative that we all are on the same page. And, you know, we all joke about on the field, off the field, but we all work together to do what's best for kids, and that's how we got to this point. So, I appreciate you, Tommy, bringing that up, because there's been years where nobody talked and nobody communicated, and we were all, people were against each other for the wrong reason. So, we're here at the table because it's about kids. It's not about us anymore. It's about how do we help every single child? You know, whether it's my medical valedictorian who has millions of dollars on the table, or it's the child that's come from a home where there aren't supports. This allows us to teach every child that comes into our building. So, thank you for that, Tommy.
And then, I just want to add, because tomorrow, three students from Granby could transfer to any of these schools.
Right.
As well, and so, we're all in this together. And this is the same, and we know in Hampton Roads, it is a transit area, and that's been one of our biggest challenges, is that when we have students who transfer to us, I had five, on Monday morning, we had five new enrollments at Granby High School, and two came to us on a four-by-four schedule, coming in in January, where we're still on a year-long schedule. So, imagine now, Virginia Beach was the last school district other than Norfolk, and they've been on it now for two years. That's on four-by-four, we're the only school district in Southampton Roads that has it, and I think we're one of only two in all of Hampton Roads that doesn't have a four-by-four schedule. So, those challenges that we have now with students who transfer to us, it means it's a lot of work and it delays graduation unless that student's willing to go on ed mentum, because they have to audit classes, they have to do summer school, they have to do evening school, and that's not fair to that student because they're not the ones who chose to move. And so, we are just trying to do whatever we can to support our students and get that graduation, on-time graduation rate up, reduce dropouts, and then support our students for after high school.
Any board members have questions? Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question, and this maybe for the principals might be able to help answer this. So, across the, you know, five high schools, we have differing teacher vacancy rates. How do you, what do you anticipate happening in regards to that with this four-by-four model? Do you think it will exacerbate it, or do you think it will help with retention of teachers?
You want to say it? Definitely assist with retention, but if you want to speak to it.
Yep, so, they actually have, the majority of teachers will have a reduced load of students they've been responsible for. By the way, that means you might get the grade of papers faster, because instead of having 150 students that they're responsible for, the majority of teachers will not have about 80 students that they would be responsible for. That also helps to build those relationships faster, and if you Google four-by-four schedule, the data is a little bit older because of when four-by-fours are coming out, but actually, there are some studies that have been done that it reduces discipline actions in classrooms, because the students become more engaged, because they have that instant relationship with the teacher, because they see them every day, they're able to develop that faster. And just imagine now, for example, we had an odd day, Monday, and then we had no school yesterday, and then today we have an odd day. And now, tomorrow, our teachers will see even-day students. They haven't seen those students since before winter break even, and so, it also will help with catching some attendance issues faster. Sometimes, I, we hate to say this, a student may, you may not notice a student not being in class because you haven't seen him over a four-day weekend or something, and so now, because you see him every day, you're like, hey, why is he not in his seat? They'll be able to pick up on that a little bit faster. So, we do believe that it will help reduce the stress. From our conversations with our teachers, there's still some that are like, oh, how is this going to work? But the majority of them believe that this will actually help boost morale because of the reduction of that workload with the number of students that they have. And they'll still get their planning period every day, that's not changing, those types of things won't change. There'll be some teachers that will have a mixed schedule, like the students, and that work falls on us. That's probably one of the hardest pieces of this, is that we are the ones that actually have to do the master schedule and put this together to make it work. And there's a lot of work that we piloted last year, just did some modeling of it, and we were able to make it work in our schools, and so, we're excited to be able to actually put that into a system and see how that comes out when we do it.
How do you propose to make this military-friendly? Because I have heard from quite a few military families who've had to move from or to a four-by-four schedule in the middle of the year, and it was disasters for them.
So, one thing that I'll tell you is, in the 757, we are very, I mean, heavy military here, and so, all of the other divisions, especially on the south side, are already doing four-by-four. Having been a teacher, principal, administrator in a four-by-four division prior, I can tell you that it is seamless. When we develop the master schedule, one of the things that we look to do is creating blocks, such as study hall blocks, or something that is needed to help transition, could be a remediation block. Students that are coming from a year-long schedule coming in would go and they would take their course classes that they have, but then in those other additional times, there would be a teacher that could assist them in doing the catch-up. So, it depends on when they come into the schedule of that time of year. So, if they come into, from a year-long time period and say it is October, then we look at their schedule, we determine what courses they're in, we put them in four of those courses, or three of the courses at that point, and then make sure that there is a block that can assist them with any catch-up needed. We also are at an advantage now that there are so many online platforms that we utilize, such as ed mentum or ed annuity, that we can also use to help students catch up and kind of accelerate that learning piece.
What about students who come in mid-year, who literally come in the middle of the year? They would be pushed into classes they've already taken half of?
Sure. Well, it depends, because remember, we're not doing just a four-by-four model, we're doing a hybrid four-by-four. So, it's very possible that the courses they're coming in with, there's going to be an alternating day. They come into a PE class, PE class could be offered semester-long or AB day. So, it depends on those specific courses, and then, of course, we always utilize, if needed, virtual Virginia for some of those options and some other online options if we find that we cannot meet their needs right then. There's always a way to meet them, we just have to think out of the box.
So, I have one additional question. I was looking at courses where students take SOLs. And, for example, sample schedule student B, where they're taking geometry in the fall of their grade 10 year, and they wouldn't take the SOL until the spring, where they take the SOLs after the semester is over?
Correct. SOLs follow the course. So, instead of having SOLs at the end of the year, the SOLs would be in the, about that January timeframe, and that would be for any students taking an SOL course. The difference for AP courses, our AP courses would be at the end of the year, because those are international dates that are given, and so, when you notice some of the schedules, you notice all of our AP courses are alternating day, because we find from research there that shows that it is better for students to take those courses alternating, where they experience the material throughout the entire year. So, we really tried to pick the best of all models and combine them together to tailor it for our students.
And what about learning loss?
Learning loss for...
Well, example, student C takes Spanish II in the fall of grade nine, but doesn't take Spanish III to the fall of grade 10.
As a former Spanish teacher on a four-by-four model, I can tell you that it's actually beneficial for students to have language acquisition every single day. So, instead of having a language class every other day where you don't become fully immersed, you really want to see those students each day. What we're also offering, and through Dr. Poole's Department Curriculum Instruction, we will be providing training to teachers also that when they come in here, because math is the same way in some, in some regards.
I'm a math teacher, so I'm very concerned about math.
Right, so you get it. But making sure that our teachers are pulling those skills and kind of bringing those skills in while they accelerate learning, and making sure we know where students are when we start off the course and keeping them there. But having taught for several years and been an administrator, it's very seamless. And we also...
Yeah, just wanted to add too, there's already summer learning loss as well. So, if they were taking Spanish II and then going Spanish III, they already have that summer gap anyway.
Right, we're talking about a full year.
Yep, yep. Most of, and that goes back to the scheduling and making sure that the classes are linked better when the counselors are putting the schedule in, when we put it in, so that there's that continuous flow, whether it's a summer gap or on a full year, or it just becomes a summer gap now on a four-by-four with that. The nice part at the high school level is the majority of our subjects are independent curriculum. Their, their, English connects over time, but look at Algebra I and then Geometry, and the teachers will tell you, there's not as much connection between those, but there is between Algebra III and that preparation for the next course, whether they want to take AFTA, or if they want to go into advanced coursework, there's a connection there. So, you'd want to make sure your schedule then is done to connect those courses.
And one key that he stated is the counseling piece. So, there will be dedicated professional development for our counselors, and we will have people coming in. It's very important when we're having these conversations with students that we're looking at that academic career plan, and we look to see how they are planned. Ideally, you'd love to have your Spanish I and Spanish II, French I and French II, your world languages back-to-back. However, if not, you want to make sure that you're not taking one in the fall semester and you don't take two all the way until spring, your sophomore year. So, that's something that counselors would work out, and we would ensure students don't have that big of a gap. Yes.
Ms. Basine?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, because the counseling piece was, is also a concern in what your counselors are telling you about, you know, current barriers to scheduling, not only access to classes, but just logistically with all that's on their plate, because I always hear, you know, on school visits, you know, that, you know, they have a lot on their plates. So, how, what is the burden, expected burden of this scheduling model on our school counselors?
For counselors right now, they are mandated to spend 80%, 80% of their time directly with students. What you're going to see with our new accountability model focused on those three Es, there are going to be more in-depth conversations with students, where we're drilling down to figure out, what is it that you want to do, you know, post-secondary, what courses are going to best align to get you there? Those are the conversations that we will have with them, and I know there's going to be training for that as well, to make sure those conversations are held. In addition, will every single schedule come out perfectly? No, you may have someone that comes with a, with a foreign language one on one semester and not till the end, but that's when we encourage students and our parents as well, you put in for a schedule change, because that will be prioritized, because it's what's in the best interest of that student.
Okay. Do you anticipate needing additional counselors specifically to address the needs of this model?
Yes, we would love additional counselors.
Stop. I mean, now that, you know, they're also, because of the 80% direct interaction with students, not just for scheduling purposes, but to meet their mental and emotional needs, that's a concern of mine with this logistic, you know, because I know schedules aren't going to be perfect, and there is going to be this constant interaction with the student and perhaps parent, you know, to get the schedule right. And I just wonder what that burden is and how we might adjust for it, so that we can successfully implement this model while also allowing for all the other needs that our students have.
So, I'm glad you brought that up. Right now, the 80/20 rule went into effect about two years ago, so it's something that our counselors are used to doing, and they maintain their time. When it comes to scheduling, as we transition into a new model of scheduling for four-by-four, there are many ways that we can work with schedules that can reduce time on the counselors as well, and that is with students taking ownership of their schedule, with entering it in, with having parent feedback. So, it's working on the front end of scheduling and being proactive as opposed to being reactive. So, it would be students putting their courses in, parents checking them, is this something that, you know, you want and agree to, perfect sign-off? And so, before it even goes into the computer, a lot of that pre-work can be done ahead of time. So, don't, there's no anticipation of a need for additional counselors. It's kind of what they're already doing, just making sure that we work with students to do it effectively.
Are there any questions? Anyone who has not spoken?
Just one last comment question. I appreciate, I had submitted a couple of general questions, you know, of what the board's responsibility is, whether we're being asked to take action on it, and I don't know if, I did share it with everyone, but we are not, we're not being asked to vote on this.
No, because this isn't a day-to-day operational initiative, so I'm not asking for a vote, but I thought it was important that the board was aware of what we're trying to do.
Absolutely, yep. So, I just wanted to be clear that, that we're not...
I do have one or two more slides just to finish up about communication. Thank you all very much, I appreciate you joining. We're gonna hit two more slides, just so that you know the communication that's been held and future communication we are gonna have. It's important that our community knows what's coming and that our community, we hear from them, if there are questions out there, we're able to answer them also. So, what you will see in this slide is, with any change, we realize communication is critical. So, feedback's been solicited from various stakeholders, as you heard, from students and staff, parents, through surveys, focus groups, info sessions. Additionally, there was a citywide hybrid four-by-four info night on December 12th at Lake Taylor High School. We understand that parents and students are actively involved, so as you see on the slide before you, there are additional virtual nights for each school. We held two nights yesterday, and that was Lake Taylor and Granby, both did a fantastic job and answered parent questions that were there. We will also hold for any parents who didn't have a chance to come in person, they didn't have a chance to do the virtual night, we're gonna hold one more session in person, and that's gonna be held at Granby High School. We're really trying to make sure that any parent that wants to hear, wants to learn, or has a question, we can be there to answer it and explain some of the advantages that are there. So, that final night scheduled for January 15th at 5:30 in the auditorium of Granby High School. It's just a brief overview, and we're really gonna focus on those questions that come before us. So, lastly, as mentioned, feedback is critical to ensuring that smooth transition. Parents can access this QR code if you're watching at home and you want to screenshot it, provide feedback, or maybe there's a question you may have. We are working on a frequently asked question document as we move forward, again, just to increase communication and assist our community. Thank you so much. Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you, because like Chair Calagero said, we've gotten some questions from parents and, you know, just socially, and some parents are really terrified about this, and I think you all did a great job, it's very well thought out, and I really appreciate all the effort, and, and it was very, explained very well tonight.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item 4.03, the Regional Recovery School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Cotado will come forth to provide an update to the board about our regional recovery program. If you will recall the, the former board members, but to the new school board members, I can't exactly remember the timeline, but it's been over a year ago. I can't exactly remember the timeline, but it's been over a year ago that I gave you some basic information about the program and how there was an interest in having a regional recovery program. And at that time, the board did give me the go-ahead to move forward. So we are in collaboration with four other school divisions with this recovery program. We do believe that it will help and support our children and families. We definitely want to move forward with it. And we also have support from the city in, in terms of funding, not through our operating budget, but they will be taking care of the funding around this through their Virginia opioid abatement, through that association or authority, they're going to support that. So we thought that it would be very helpful to have an update today. And of course, we will be asking for a, a board vote. Every school division is being asked for support officially through a board vote. And we would like to implement this program starting in the fall, starting in the fall. And we're in the process now of just putting things together and planning and making sure that, you know, if we get the green light to move forward, that we are ready to go day one for our kids. Because again, we do believe this is a needed program for our, for our children.
Dr. Cotado?
Thank you. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
Congratulations as well. Good evening, Chair DeCaligero. I was going to say DeCalagero, but.
You may say that.
Vice Chair Thomas, Board Members, and Dr. Birdsong. This evening, I will present to you a proposal for a regional two recovery school called Harbor Hope Center. The proposal is really a culmination of the work of a regional steering committee that myself and Senior Director of Student Wellness, Dr. Moore, was also part of. And this work has been from really the five region to tidewater area school divisions who really identified an emerging need for a recovery school and committed to exploring a regional approach to this, as it would be very difficult for a single school to have this. The divisions that were involved in this process were Chesapeake Public Schools, Norfolk Public Schools, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach. Each of the five school divisions collaboratively developed all components of this proposed that I'll be talking about tonight. The center is under the fiscal authority of Virginia Beach, but it is located in Chesapeake. My presentation this evening will kind of provide you a broad overview. And at the end, I will have time, be able to provide you answers to questions you may have. The purpose of the Harbor Hope Center really is to provide students recovering from substance abuse disorders, a range of academic as well as therapeutic services, in a very structured environment where individual recovery and progress towards a high, high school diploma is prioritized. As appropriate schools will, students will reintegrate into the homeschool setting and remain a Harbor Hope Center through their graduation. The mission of Harbor Hope Center is to provide all students a safe place to learn and develop healthy coping skills, as well as reflecting on their individual relationships with substance use, as well as encourage our students to work towards sobriety and recognize that recovery often follows a nonlinear path. Harbor Hope Center Program Description. Just a brief description of this program. Students with substance abuse disorders in Region 2, really particularly the south side areas, Chesapeake, Norfolk, Portsmouth, Suffolk, and Virginia Beach, can voluntarily seek enrollment at the Harbor Hope Center, which is a full-day program that will be in Chesapeake, and I'll talk more about that. Eligible students determined through a comprehensive application and a screening process will receive academic and therapeutic services from a program coordinator, from teachers, a licensed clinical staff, including a clinical coordinator and a peer recovery specialist. While attending the center, students remain enrolled in their homeschool, which retains responsibility for academic, disciplinary, 504 IET testing, and attendance records. So the Harbor Hope Center goals, there are five main goals here, and I'll talk a little bit more about some additional goals. But their main goals are to educate students in a safe and nurturing environment, ensure students in the program receive a rigorous academic curriculum to receive, or, receive their high school diploma or a GED. Also, support and strengthen students' mental and social, emotional health while in the program. Engage students and families in wraparound services throughout the program, and provide students with the skills to abstain from using substances during and after completing the program. So going into a little bit more depth with goal number two. Here, all goals do have a measurable objective. Here's a sample goal with a measurable objective aligned with each school division's plan, plans to ensure students are future-ready. And it talks a little bit more about the graduation, the homeschool piece. Homeschool is measured with the diploma attainment. Goes a little more into details with that second part. Here you find the six positions that are unique to the Harbor Hope Center, which have been created to provide service and support as needed to students attending. And you'll see you have the main four positions above. And then below, you'll have a clinical position, which is the clinical coordinator. Another clinical position, which is a peer recovery specialist. The academic model uses three main areas, three main areas of focus. It'll blend students' grade levels and abilities. It will tailor programming to individual students' needs based on one or more of the components. Now, one additional thing that you have to keep in mind here is that students may be concurrently enrolled in more than one of the three components. For example, a student may be enrolled in the MOP, which is a multi, multi-division online platform, while also enrolling in credit recovery. So they can, not just each of the three, but they can blend some of those as well. With the multi-division online platform, Harbor Hope Center utilizes Imagine Learning's state-approved MOP, is what it's called, is a primary instructional method. It also operates on a four-by-four schedule. Students can enroll in up to eight asynchronous courses annually. Students do receive and attend face-to-face sessions with a special education teacher, a mentor, and can access instructors via email, phone, and video. The credit recovery support allows students who have previously failed a course, the credit recovery program allows, again, asynchronous instruction facilitated by a special education teacher or coach. This approach enables academic acceleration and also ensures that students can successfully complete the required coursework. And of course, you have the general education development, which is for students unlucky to earn a, a standard diploma due to academic progress or their age. Harbor Hope Center offers a GED program after Chesapeake Public Schools Initiative. This program provides an alternative pathway to credentialing and future opportunities as well. And the clinical approach, which I think is very unique, this is an approach that is more focused and dedicated counseling and case management service than traditional school counselors would employ. Multidisciplinary approach integrates peer support with evidence-based clinical practices. Individual sessions will be given to students, one to two thirty, one to two thirty-minute weekly sessions with a licensed clinician, and additional supports is needed. Also, daily groups, participation in daily groups featuring psychoeducation, mental health, and activity-based programs. Then they have the peer supports too, that are also one to two thirty-minute weekly sessions with a peer recovery specialist, an adult who has recovered from substance abuse and supports, supports students in the recovery, and then also ongoing support. Peer specialists maintain contact and offer support post-graduation or during transitions back to homeschool. Another key part too of this is a community and family wraparound service. So students' families, including their families, are connected to local recovery and mental health resources to ensure comprehensive support. The Harbor Hope Center will operate, as you see here. You see an overview of how the center operates traditionally. It is a modified year-round schedule, following the traditional calendar during the school year, while continuing academic and clinical services remotely in summer months. So as some staff will be on contract in summer months, staff will work virtually with students. And where need arise, they can arrange to meet face-to-face with students that require some additional supports over the summer. And the enrollment and application process, they have, the steering committee examined the application and enrollment process to develop a framework. So until the program coordinator is hired, this is primarily a framework. But the application process includes stated criteria, an application, interviews with the students and parents regarding, a comprehensive review of student records, and medical professional recommendations. The actual application interview questions, as well as criteria for the review, records review, will be developed collaboratively again once the program coordinator is hired. And there is a mandatory drug testing policy that is going to be also part of the program. Harbor Hope Center is a school of choice for accountability purposes and program integrity. Choosing to attend will require students and parents to agree to submit to random and ongoing drug and alcohol testing performed at the school site by trained clinical staff. Students must comply with all procedures and protocols established by the school. A student's failure to submit to a drug test or to comply with all procedures and protocols is a violation of this policy, and may result in discipline, up to and including removal of the program. But what I, one thing that's very important though, is that recovery is not a linear process. Some students may experience relapses and test positive for substance use. The policies will be designed to effectively address and support students in these situations, ensuring that they do receive the necessary guidance and support and resources to continue in the recovery process, which is really the key part of that recovery. And so next steps, adopting a regional approach to establishing recovery schools has proven effective, again, in sharing resources with our other school divisions, and this reduces costs. It is unlikely that a single division alone could support the complete recovery school model for its students. However, the tidewater region has the potential to successfully implement this initiative by working collaboratively to address this unmet need. To move forward, the next step in the process would be the school board approval at the January, school board business meeting on January 22nd. At this time, I'm ready to answer any questions you may have.
Or have any questions? Ms. Massey?
Thank you. I'm, I'm really glad to see this effort in place. It's very much needed, and I'm glad that Norfolk Public Schools is going to be part of it. I do have a couple of questions in regards to, you know, again, all about lifting it up so that it can be the best that it can possibly be for, for our students and, and to meet the needs of our students. How, can you give a little background as to how the needs were determined in terms of how the allocations of like what, you know, the, you know, the peer recovery specialist, like how many of, of each of those positions were needed? Can you talk a little bit about that? Like, did you look at, was their data examined as terms of the burden of the?
Correct.
The problem, and, you know, if you could talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, so initially, we had multiple meetings with all the other regional schools that are involved in this. And we all looked at our data, our discipline data. So we pulled discipline data. We looked at all drug offenses, offenses involved alcohol, different kinds of drugs and things, paraphernalia as well. And so we looked at all of those numbers, and we looked at them within our, our own school division, and then we kind of collaboratively looked with the, and worked with the other school divisions to kind of determine and justify a real need for this. We, we all know that there is a need. It's, it's come up many times in the past. But this really truly solidified that need for moving forward with this and getting all the regional schools working together on this. So that's what they looked at primarily. And when we look at the model, right now, we looked at, when we're looking at the schools and the structures, we're looking individually at the number of schools, and we're looking at student enrollment between ninth and 12th grade. So for us, that was giving us about fifteen percent of the cost for this regional program. So, you know, with Virginia Beach being a larger school, Chesapeake being a larger school, they have a higher number. But, but I think that's the main reason. We, we looked at the data and found that this was, again, an unmet need. And been an unmet need for many years.
Right, right. Yeah, absolutely. I guess I'm also more interested in knowing what data, outside of the discipline data, did you look at other public health data? You know, or work with each of the public health departments in each of the?
Yes.
Districts to get, you know, additional data to support this effort?
Yes, correct. We actually did work with local agencies that work with students that are suffering from some type of substance abuse. The problem is though that there's a stigma to this, and many families will not report. And many students will continually go get in trouble, do other things, when the real true issue is their dependency to a substance, or maybe a family member's dependency. So it is hard sometimes to get that hard data because of that challenge and the stigma. But I think going through that data that we had, based on student data, student discipline, and then also looking at the, the, the health agencies out there and talking with other school divisions, we were able to kind of come down with something.
And will there, sorry, one last question. Will there be partnerships with the CSBs and to support the programming?
There already is partnerships as, as far as the resource specialists and the clinicians that are going to be working with them.
Dr. Martin? Okay, thank you for this presentation. So it does state that this will operate under Chesapeake Public Schools' calendar?
Correct.
So my question is, I didn't see anything in here about transportation. Have you?
Yes, oh yeah, I've worked with Mr. Fraley on that. We had to do that. Actually, that was one, probably one of our first meetings to ensure.
So it'll be provided?
Yes, we will be providing transportation for that. Definitely.
Other questions? Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to Agenda Item 4.04, Discussion of the Special Election for Ward 3 Candidate Seat and Appointment Schedule. I am wholly unprepared to lead this discussion tonight. Mr. Cloud?
Uh, yeah, I would suggest that, that we lead the discussion. I'm going to defer to Andy to talk to you about, you essentially have, have two items. One is the writ that needs to be filed in the next few days with the Circuit Court, requesting the special election. And then two, the process which has to be completed within forty-five days from January 1st of selecting a, someone temporarily to hold that ward seat until the special election can be out. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fox.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Fairly straightforward process for setting the special election. It's set out on the statute. The key time period is whether the vacancy occurs ninety days or more before the next general election. So you'll recall, you'll recall Ms. Campson vacated her seat in approximately September. So that kicked the special election at which Mr. Paulson was elected over a year forward to the, this most current general election. Because Mr. Clanton has vacated more than ninety days prior to the next general election, the default date for that general election to fill his seat would be the November 2025 general election. So the default setting, if you will, would be to ask the Circuit Court to set a special election this coming November of 2025 to fill the remainder of Mr. Clanton's seat. The other option is to ask the court to set a standalone special election prior to that date. So you can't ask the court to go longer out than the next special, than the appropriate general election, but you can ask for a, a sooner date. Caveats to that are a couple. There are fifty-five day blackout periods before the general election and the primary election. So that basically gives you just a couple of weeks in which you could actually set a standalone special election. Has to be on a Tuesday, and if you set it. Has to be on a Tuesday, and if you set a standalone special election, there is a increased cost of that because you have to have an election just for that seat, as opposed to it just being an additional seat that's up for election at the general election. So generally, the board has gone with the statutory default. That would be our advice in this case. You have the option, as Mr. Cloud can describe, will describe, of appointing an interim member to serve until such time as Mr. Clanton's replacement is elected at a special election, which by default would be in November of this coming year. That would be our advice. Mr. Paulson, yes?
Yes. On the additional cost, that would be, have to be borne by the person requesting the spec- of the-
No, the city would bear the cost of the additional election.
Okay, so it's not paid for. It would be something we would have to consider. Now, I don't think we want to pay-
The city would have to bear the cost, and the city may-
Yeah.
-feel that that should be ultimately borne by the school system, if that's the, if that is the decision that's pursued. Also, the Circuit Court could decline to set the special election for the date you request. It's all totally up to the Circuit Court, so the Circuit Court could also take that into consideration and say that the interests of justice are best served by going with the statutory default.
Thank you.
All right, shall we move on to appointment of an interim member or any other questions about the special election process?
Yes, please.
All right.
As I said, the, in terms of the schedule for the appointment of interim member, the statute gives you up to 45 days from the, from January 1, from when the seat was vacant, to make that. After that, it's then shifted to the Circuit Court, which can step in and appoint someone. They do not have to. The other requirements in terms of the schedule for that, besides having to do it within 45 days, which I count it as being, I believe, February 15 that would run, which I think is like a Saturday or Sunday, it's a weekend, so you would really want to deal with it the week before that. In addition, at least seven days prior to making the appointment, the board must hold a public meeting at which the board must announce the names of all persons being proposed for the interim appointment and make available for inspection each person's resume and other materials required by the board in terms of gathering material to make the choice. I'm reading that essentially from the statute itself. So that's another deadline that you have to consider. It could be earlier than seven days, but at least, it must be at least seven days before the actual vote on the appointment. In the past, there have been considerations, I think, and some of the board members that are, may have been through that, can speak to that, but of some sort of process whereby you announce to the public that they can make, they can apply for the seat for your consideration. You tell them what information you need, such as resumes, et cetera, maybe form some questions to ask of each. You then take those applications and, depending on the number, but I think in the past, there was a fairly large number, and the board reduced them down to a handful, maybe five or six people, to actually publicly interview. And those would be the people who would be the candidates that you would need to provide information to the public about, make available to the public for purposes of a public hearing at least seven days before the actual vote. So if there are no other questions, I'll leave it to you all to discuss in terms of how you want to handle it. You do, I think, have, between now, you have, January 21 is your retreat, the 22 is your regular business meeting, February 5 is your next work session, but the actual business meeting in February, I think, is the 19th, which would be too late. So you either need to get everything done with the idea of voting on February 5, or perhaps hold a special call meeting on February 12 to give you some additional time.
We would have to make the announcement of the vacancy, and probably in that announcement also put the deadline for applying.
Yeah, you should, you'll have a deadline for, you need to tell the public, as of this date, we will accept no more applications. You want a cutoff date for accepting applications, so, which would be, you would want that date to work in terms of, to give you enough time to, before you interview, you know, the time it's going to require you to review all the applications and maybe just call out some for interview. In some cases, and part of it, you know, you will have to give some guidance to the public through your website or anything, remind people that the qualifications for being appointed are the same as the qualification for being elected, including, of course, that they reside within that ward and that they cannot have a job or a public, a government board or commission seat that might be in conflict with the school board seat. And there are various potential conflicts that could come up. Of course, the biggest one being, of course, you can't be appointed to the school board if you're an employee of the school board. But, yeah, so you need to kind of work that schedule out whereby you're going to announce that, if not tonight, within maybe the next couple of days, that we're accepting applications, and give a cutoff date of a few days, maybe 10 days, something like that, after which you won't review any application received after that. And then from that, work into the process of eliminating, identifying people to interview, and working in there, the required public hearing, which has to be at least seven days before the date of the vote itself.
Thank you. Is there, when Ms. Stone was appointed, we went through this pro-
Yes.
I say "we" because we are the board now, so-
Right, we had a, we had a timeline in place, and we could put that together, but I do think there needs to be in it because we're already at January, yeah, that we're already a week into this-
Eight days into this, yes.
-that by Friday, we should have an announcement out, and along with an application similar to what we did with Ms. Stone, if that's in agreement, and we can share-
About application-
Yes, and we can, we can, yeah, Ms. Tanner has that. If you could, if you could share that with this current full board, Ms. Tanner, I think that would be helpful. And then, you know, I'd be happy to take a stab at creating a timeline around that, similar to what we did, and then distribute it to all of you for your feedback, and, you know, we could go from there. But there, we've had to have special meetings, you know, to kind of meet the needs that are required of this process, such as doing the interviews, and then coming back to review all the applications as well. That takes some time, so we'll have to figure out what days work for all of us to do that.
When, I guess we could backwards plan this, and it'd probably be the easiest-
Exactly.
And then start to say, okay, we're going to, how many applications did you get at the last-
We got about 25 applications at the last, for the last appointment, and we interviewed, we decided to interview about five. So it just depends, and then before, you know, we've done this a couple of times, so, but I know we got a pretty robust amount last time, but it might vary, you know, from 10 to 25 applications.
If it would help, there's a draft of something that the dates in here cannot be used because they won't fit into the 45-day deadline, but you can core, sort of see, and I take, and this is based on what was done with Ms. Stone, is that right? You see, you know, the process as it was used last time.
That's what I was going to use, yeah.
So there's copies of this for everybody.
And the board reviews every one of those at some point. We're going to have to look at, to pair them from 25 to 5, or-
Yeah, we have- We have to do that as a full board.
Yeah, it's a process, and we do that all together.
Right, that takes time.
Yes.
I was starting to try to visualize the 14th of February versus today, and all this timeline, we're at the cusp of, we need to-
We need to ASAP, yeah.
And get this thing going.
That's why by this week.
And understand who does what, you know, it's my, my, you know, because some of us have more time than others, and we can get in there and help you calculate these days and double-check each other, because if we miss one day-
We have a model based on what happens.
We have a model from what we use, we just need to update it with, with the dates, and it can be sent back out to all of you for a quick turnaround.
But again, this will need to be compressed into a different timeline than what that model shows.
Right.
And at least it's some of this you do in closed session, such as discussing the qualities of the candidates as you begin to eliminate some from inter, that won't be even interviewed.
Yeah, but we'll, yeah, and just, just having looked at this for the first time. So this, this looks like a mock-up for this Ward Three. But February 19, as you said, is too late, so we kind of need to work backwards from February 12, and, but I think we can adjust this and have this out by the end of, by Friday. But I think an announcement does need to go out by Friday with the qualifications that are, the requirements, you know, they have to live in the ward, you know, all the things you've already mentioned, and, and the application, and then, Ms. Tanner?
Would you have, happen to have the full packet of what we used for Ms. Stone, so that we don't have to-
We can fit the way-
Yeah, we questions everything, so that we don't have to start from scratch.
Channel 47, but communicate.
Yeah.
So I can, I can get you that.
Okay, thank you. I think we all, we each need it just to, as an idea of where to start, instead of starting from scratch, because those are, I mean, very well-vetted questions.
Right.
So hopefully we won't have to do it all over again.
And Madam Chair, I'm assuming you're going to keep us in the loop, because Karen will have to post everything, so the administration will need to know what your plans are around that.
Absolutely. Any other discussion or questions? So I appreciate, Tanya, we'll take a, take a look at the calendar.
Oh, yeah, well, it looks like this draft has already been, but we'll, yeah, I can, I'd be happy to adjust it and send it back out.
And I'd be glad to help you, Tanya, I mean, Ms. Batting, I would be-
Yeah, I don't think it's going to require, yeah, I don't think it's going to require a whole lot, but-
I can count my fingers and toes.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
If we follow a similar timeline, we could discuss the applicants at the business, at closed session on January 22.
Right.
The only difference is that we'd have to move up the interviews.
Right, and I think we'd have to have a special meeting that following week.
The 29th.
On the 29th is what I envision in order to meet the timeline. We do, it's on Monday and Tuesday, so Wednesday, we're, the 29th, we will not be at a conference. We will be here.
So should we plan a meeting for the 29th?
Yes, I mean, I first, I would, I would do that and have scheduled strictly, you know, have interviews, I mean-
On the 29th?
Yeah, on the 29th.
But we'd have to, does, we need seven days to put those people's name out there, right, before we interview them?
No, before we-
No, that, before we vote, before we vote on them, we have to do that. So, so if our goal is to, like, if our goal is to vote on the candidate on February 5 during our work session-
We need to have the interviews on the 29th.
We need to do that on the 29th, and then also have time to not just interview, but then for us to come back and then discuss, you know, the interviews, which we've done historically after the interviews.
So we can go ahead and-
We meet the same day as we do the interviews.
So we can, we can schedule 4:00 PM on the 29th for our interviews now.
We can, right.
Why don't we do that?
Yes, and we did, we didn't do it here in the past, we did it at a school, so that's another option. Can we do it here?
You could announce the names of the candidates at the public hearing itself.
And we can announce those candidates that we are interviewing on the 29th.
Yes.
Correct, or even earlier to make that seven-day window.
I mean, I would say, no, I think that meets the seven-day window.
At least a seven-day window.
Yeah.
Did we come up with a time?
I said 4:00 PM.
Does 4:00 PM work for everybody?
4:00 PM work on the 29th.
So we're proposing a special call meeting on January 29 to interview applicants at 4:00 PM?
Yeah, to interview applicants.
Interview, mhm, got it.
We would conduct that in the conference room in the back?
It's open.
Oh, this, oh, okay, I didn't know if-
Yeah, it has to be open.
It's open, it's public.
No, it has to be open to the public, right, but I didn't know how much space we would require, whether we needed to use this room or the other, it doesn't matter, more space is better, yeah.
I think in the Stone case, they actually did it in one of the schools or something.
We did do it at the schools, but that-
Yeah, but there was almost nobody there.
I'm not sure why, and I think logistically that was, right, not, not the best.
So we'll, we'll do it here.
Yeah.
So, so review of resumes and applications on the 22nd, interview them on the 29th, vote on February 5.
The minimum days for advertising, this is three days, at least three days in advance, that has to be posted?
Advertising?
The advertising, the applicant, there's a position-
The statute doesn't actually refer to advertising. I would say, you know, as soon as we know what that date's going to be, I would go ahead and post it.
That date's going to be the 10th.
It's at least seven days prior to making the appointment, you have to hold the public hearing, but it doesn't actually address, you know, how many days in advance you would need to advertise.
Are you talking about advertising for the position?
I'm sorry?
Are you referring to advertising for the position?
Yes, or the, not advertising's not the right word, but posting for public information that we're going to have a meeting for this purpose. We have to, there is a requirement.
When I said advertise, I was literally referring to, independent of the usual process of where you would, under the FOIA, notify the public, I would advertise in the newspaper. As generally speaking, with public, officially statutorily required public hearings, you would advertise in a newspaper of general circulation, which here is the Virginian Pilot, of the meeting, you know, for, and the purpose for it several days in advance. Some statutes require 10 days. I think they've now recently, General Assembly changed them to five, but I don't know that there's any statutory-
It's not a public hearing, it's just-
Yeah.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah. Mr. Fox was pointing out that the statute actually refers to this as a public meeting rather than a, a public hearing, so it may well be, I think that as long as you, as you notify the public as required for any meeting, that that will suffice. But I would also informally post, like, at the school board's websites and things, notice of it as soon as you know when you're going to do it.
We know we're going to do it on the 29th.
Right, and so I would recommend that we do the interviews on the 29th, and then on February 5, because we also, I mean, we could do a couple of things. On the 29th- On the 29th, we could do interviews and the public hearing where individuals can show support, yeah, show support for individuals who are, put their name in the hat on the same day as the interviews, or we could do it on February 5th and then move the decision, the vote on February 12th, which would be creating another special meeting. Or we could do, have the public hearings on the 5th after our work session, have the interviews on the 29th, have the public hearing on February 5th, and then take a vote on February 12th.
Madam Chair, as I recall at Lake Taylor, I think we had the public hearing and the interviews the same day.
Yeah, yeah, we did do it. It's not to say that it's right or wrong. It's just an option.
I think we should do, personally, I think that the 29th to do the interviews and the public hearing makes sense since we're coming in only for that purpose. We don't have other agenda items to deal with that day.
Right.
And then we can move our timeline up.
Okay. So we do that the same day?
So on the 29th, you're going to have the public hearing and you're going to interview the selected candidates. And so on the 5th, what are you going to do on the 5th?
The 5th would be to vote.
The vote, you're going to take a vote on the 5th? Okay, all right.
So, okay. And Ms. Tanner, do you still have the announcement for, that we use?
And the questions and everything.
And the questions. So, yeah, if we get that and then update it.
I'd just like to review the questions.
We may have to update those questions.
Yeah. So I expect everyone to be on emails tomorrow if we can discuss if we want to modify or change any questions so that we can get this package out by the 10th.
And January 10th is the announcement of the application process and timeline, correct? This Friday?
Right, Friday, right.
So who puts that out?
Ms. Tanner.
Yes, we'll take care of that.
Okay. Is everybody straight on the dates?
Did you all have a cutoff date for the application? If you looked at this timeline, did you want to?
I would use the 20th. 10th through the 20th? Or do we need to close it before that?
We could keep it open as late as 21st. Depends on, we're going to have to have time to...
We have to also verify, verify residents because we did have that issue last time. So we need at least two days, I would say, right?
Three, max.
Three, ideally, okay. So then...
It could be the 17th?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, 17th.
Yeah, so I would say the 17th. That's a Friday.
We have a week if you want to.
Do we have someone that vets the information for us, or do we do that ourselves?
I think the Registrar's Office.
Office of Elections.
Office of Elections will verify. Yeah.
They do it all the time.
Okay, well, it looks like we have our timeline. Great. And then we'll just, tomorrow, everybody, please review the questions. I'll send out an email around 1 o'clock to asking if anybody has any thoughts on altering And then we'll finalize on Friday morning.
Sounds good.
This is the questions or the application?
Well, I'd like everyone to review, like, the questions that were asked in the application packets before we just send out what we used before.
Right. Why would we do it that quick?
Because we need to get it out on the 10th.
Because it has to be announced on Friday.
No, I meant the questions.
The application has to be put out on Friday.
So there are questions in the application.
Okay, the questions on the application, not the questions that we'll ask during the interview.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, questions, a lot of questions out there.
Yeah. There are a lot of questions.
Yeah. All right, so, I have lost my agenda. All right, so any other, any other comments, thoughts, questions? Okay, so let's move on to Section 5.01, Adjournment. We have a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, the only, the only thing I was going to say, going back to, you know, I was reflecting back on the agenda requests that you had made, and we're going to talk about this in the retreat, I believe, where we're going to go over our protocols, our norms and protocols, how things get on the agenda and all of that. So I just wanted to, to share with the Board, you know, that there is a process and that we're going to hopefully, you know, go over that so that we're all on the same page and we know how things get on the agenda and, and when they get on the agenda and things like that. It's just so it's not a mystery.
Well, yes, but we also have to recognize that some of these are, as this, the application, trying to meet with the school, the city council and some of these other things, it's going to take some lead time to do that.
Oh, of course, right, right.
I just don't want it to get lost in the process of getting to where we can talk about it because I don't, I don't think we want that to be late.
Right.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody, for productive first meeting, a good first meeting. So now, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.